So our first proclamation will be for National Public Health Week. And if our public health people who are here can come on up and just stand. Come on, Jennifer. Come on, Lisa. I know you're all here for it, so. I will read it, and then it'd be great if you could say something. Dr. Wu, okay, thank you. Whereas the theme for National Public Health Week in 2024 is protecting, connecting, and thriving, we are all public health. And whereas the goal of National Public Health Week in 2024 is to focus on civic engagement, healthy neighborhoods, climate change, new tools and innovations, reproductive and sexual health, emergency preparedness, and the future of public health. And whereas these areas highlight every aspect of public health. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, mitigate, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as COVID-19 pandemic, natural disasters such as wildfires, flooding, and severe storms, and other disasters, including disasters caused by human activity and public health emergencies. And whereas public health professionals collaborate with partners outside of the health sector, including city planners, transportation officials, education officials, and private sector businesses, recognizing that other sectors can influence health outcomes. And whereas in communities across the United States, individuals are changing the way they care for their health by building healthy relationships and connections locally and across the country. Now therefore be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 26th day of March 2024, does hereby recognize the week of April 1 through 7, 2024, as National Public Health Week in Napa County. We call upon our residents to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand that we can make our communities healthier, safer, and stronger when we support and stay engaged with one another.
Hi, good morning, and thank you so much, Chair Gallagher and the Board of Supervisors. I'm Christine Wu. I'm the Public Health Officer and Deputy Director of the Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health. And I'm very grateful to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the staff in the Public Health Division. Now, this proclamation announcing the upcoming week of April 1 through the 7th acknowledges the efforts and contributions of public health and highlights issues that continue to be important for improving our community's health. The theme this year, protecting, connecting, and thriving, we are all public health, indicates that the Public Health Division, as part of the Health and Human Services Agencies, continues this work towards the foundational understanding that health is connected to, our health is connected to everything around us, and that we are stronger when we work together to lift everyone's well-being. And so although we are now a year out from the end of the COVID-19 state of public, state public health emergency, we are still working to fully grasp and address the long-term detrimental impacts of the pandemic on our economy, our children's education, and our community's physical and mental health. Some of the daily themes outlined by the American Public Health Association that you described are civic engagement, because we know that states with higher civic engagement, like voting, have better public health outcomes; healthy neighborhoods, because we know that where we live, where we eat, sleep, work, and play can have a huge impact on our health; on climate change that threatens our health in ways that are not yet fully understood, as we see the increased deaths from heat waves on our agricultural communities, or tropical diseases making their way up north with the mosquitoes that carry them; emergency preparedness, because being ready for emergencies is crucial to saving lives; and, you know, a focus on the future of public health that is grounding our work in our communities to help shape our work, because we know that joining forces with unexpected partners from different sectors and centering community voices allows every person access to the support and care they need for a healthier life and makes for a healthier community. And that's why on Sunday, the last day of Public Health Week, we celebrate with our community and with the Napa County Office of Emergency Services to host the Community Health Fair. And I invite all of you to join us with the many community partners at Fuller Park on April 7, 1 to 3:30 p.m. And I brought along a flyer for you all to have, as well as extras for distribution. So I did invite a few of our community partners as well, so they'll come up and join us for a picture.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Wu. And if we can have a picture in the front here with everyone, all our partners. Okay, do we have reps from American Red Cross? Anyone? Great, thank you. Come on up. I'm gonna go ahead and read and then turn it over to you? Okay, great. Whereas during American Red Cross Month, recognized annually in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Napa County. You know what? Supervisor Pedrosa wanted to ask something about the public health.
I can wait.
Are they still here? Stay, because.
Yeah, all good.
Okay, we're gonna move forward, but I want to come back to public health. I'm gonna start again. Whereas during American Red Cross Month, recognized annually in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Napa County and reaffirm our commitment to ensuring no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas the work of the American Red Cross to prevent and alleviate human suffering has been vital to strengthening our community's resilience. And whereas in times of crisis, people in Napa County have consistently come together to care for one another. This spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, 143 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in the county who continue to carry out Ms. Barton's lifesaving legacy. These local volunteers join millions of people across the U.S. who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, and/or learn vital life-preserving skills through the American Red Cross. And whereas we recognize the month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask members of the community to join in this commitment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 26th day of March 2024, does hereby recognize March 2024 as American Red Cross Month in Napa County. On behalf of our community, we commend and extend gratitude to the American Red Cross of the Northern California Coastal Region, their representatives, and volunteers for their invaluable contributions to the people of Napa County. Furthermore, this board encourages all members of the community to reach out, learn more, and support the mission of the American Red Cross.
Thank you so much. Good morning. Thank you so much for the proclamation. My name is Vincent Valenzuela. I'm the Executive Director for the American Red Cross Serving the North Bay Chapter. That's Napa, Sonoma, Solano, and Marin Counties. We definitely appreciate this proclamation and acknowledgement of Red Cross Month. The support from our local elected officials helps keep our staff and our volunteers motivated to deliver the mission of alleviating human suffering across the nation and across the globe. We encourage folks to turn your compassion into action. Join us in this mission. The easiest way to do that is visit redcross.org, 1-800-RED-CROSS. Learn about our mission, take a training, join us in delivering some lifesaving skills. On a more local and immediate level, I would like to invite everyone to a Red Cross Open House we're holding this Thursday at the Napa Community Foundation, 4 to 7 p.m. We'll have representatives from all of our lines of services there, from SAF, Service of the Armed Forces, our Biomed Blood Drive Services, our Disaster Services, our Training Services, as mentioned, from the public health folks, disaster preparedness is extremely important. I won't call anyone for not having a go-bag, but this could be a reminder today to get your go-bag ready. So please join us on Thursday and learn a bit more about the Red Cross. I would like to introduce one of our local volunteers, Jim Jett. He's gonna tell you a little bit about one of our programs we have coming up as well that's open to the community.
Thanks, Vincent. Yeah, I'm Jim Jett. I live here in Napa. And I participated in a number of these smoke alarm installations in Napa County. And, you know, it's pretty impressive to go into these mobile homes and help change batteries that have been dead for 10 years. And so they get new alarms put in for free. So that's been very rewarding and eye-opening. We have a smoke alarm installation going on in American Canyon at Las Casitas Mobile Home Park on April the 6th. So if anybody is interested in getting involved, we'd love to have you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you both, and let's get a photo real quick. Okay. Okay, great, thank you. And Supervisor Pedrosa, I think you had a comment on the public health.
Thank you, Chair Gallagher. I'm just reminded, because I see familiar faces, especially, you know, Jennifer Yasumoto. I remember during the pandemic, you know, you and Dr. Karen Lucy have been very wise to say, there's always a crisis after the pandemic. And I'm very interested in knowing how we're tracking, you know, what is happening after the pandemic and how our community's dealing with it. So, and I know this is new to all of us, this is new to our community, but is there any indicators that we're looking at to kind of closely monitor kind of public health and community health overall?
Thank you, Supervisor Pedrosa. So, public health actively monitors and does surveillance regularly regardless of whether or not we are in a pandemic or post-pandemic period. So what we do is we continue our wastewater surveillance. We get reports regularly of all the Title 1780-plus infectious diseases and other conditions that are reportable to us. So we have various methods for continuing to monitor the community's health. In addition to that, this past year, in 2023, we completed our community health assessment that really identifies need gaps, and you'll be hearing a lot more about our work in that realm in mid-April.
Good. No, I appreciate that. And I think the one I'm interested too is the wellness centers in our schools, if we're seeing any uptick, right? Because to me, if you're seeing an issue in our schools, you know, I've always said it's better to invest $2 there than $1 after.
That's all about prevention.
Yeah, exactly.
And I really appreciate that comment. Yes, you know, mental health and behavioral health issues were one of the needs that were identified by the community health assessment. And actually, we released a, as you probably know, the funding for the master settlement agreements in the Mental Health, MHSA RFP recently, to try to have our community partners work together in addressing those needs.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for replying. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Wu, and thank you for the questions, Supervisor Pedrosa. Okay, we're going to move on to item five, our consent calendar for special districts. Do I have anything from the board, any comments or anything you need to pull? Okay. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar for special districts? No, this is just for the consent, but I'll let you know when it's the general public comment. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, moved by Cottrell, seconded by Ramos. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are going to now move on to item six, our regular consent calendar. Item 6A through T, do we have any comments from the board or anything you need to pull? Okay, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar, item 6A through T? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Motion to approve 6A through T.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ramos, second by Pedrosa. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. We will now move on to general public comment, item seven. For all matters not listed on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and special districts, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Debbie Alterstar. I live in Yountville. I'm an MSW, LCSW, who's worked mostly in hospitals. So my comments today are about, this is totally earnest, it's not crass, that we treat stray dogs better than we treat stray older adults. I have become a reluctant hobbyist who is an elder rescue. Last year was my first elder rescue, and again, I'm being earnest, because the solutions are to treat older adults who don't have family to help them, who are becoming unhoused, as well as we treat stray dogs. I didn't know there was gonna be a dog presentation here. I'd already planned this. So if you have a dog that's gonna lose housing, you can go on next door and start talking about it, and like, you might get 76 replies, and everyone will start checking back with you, and they'll ask their friends, they'll try to rehouse that dog. If you have an older adult who's losing their housing, a boat can't see them until they become homeless. As a rescue reluctantly, because I don't have the time, that's the reluctance, it's so time-intensive, I've called like 10 agencies, got that person started there, but all they really do is call back to, in a way, check to see how the family member might be doing, or the helper might be doing for the senior. They don't necessarily have the ability to serve an older adult as a whole person or have a relationship with them. And that's where the stray analogy really makes a difference. Dogs, animals are sympathetic. A lot of people have that hobby. They will take a stray animal into their home, they'll pet them, they'll spend a lot of time with them. No one has time for the stray older adult, and their suffering is not attractive. And it's because the suffering is so profound why I'm involved. A stray dog who's lost their owner's, having cancer, has to give them up. The dog doesn't know that. Eventually, they get a new home. The stray older adult who knows that they're being evicted, potentially through no fault of their own, knows that they're gonna be homeless, and that's why the suffering is so, so immense. And last year's stray, my first stray, we tried to get her an appointment at Olay Health for like emergency mental health support, because it was, became mental health along with housing need. No, there was no capacity. We couldn't, we, two of us tried to escalate the case. One of them was a social worker, the queen, could never get that housing, so the emotional support. Ultimately, APS rescued the first stray before she actually became homeless. I'm not sure what's gonna happen to the stray this year, but I want to use two more dog analogies. We let sleeping dogs lie. We don't let older adults be older adults when they have a housing emergency. They're not allowed to take naps. They're not allowed to be overwhelmed. We expect them to be extremely high-functioning, and we call to check and suggest about 10 more things for them to do, as if they're a high-functioning person who's not aware that they're about to become completely homeless. So, and the last thing is we expect the older adult to learn new tricks, which we do not expect of the older dog. And the tricks we expect them to learn are how to be a social worker. I'll talk another time more, but I really want you to think seriously about this. I'm being earnest.
Thank you, Deb.
Good morning. Jim Hinton, 45 Spring Street, Napa, California. It's great to see Thomas Zeleny here again this morning. I miss you. I like seeing him. Nice guy. He'd have her around. Unfortunately, though, it's not nice to see Alfredo again. Alfredo, he returned, and even though nobody in the community respects him, even though nobody in the community trusts him, nobody in the community likes him. You know, I used to be the only one that would call him out year after year for his self-interested BS, but now that the FBI is involved and the newspaper's writing stories, a lot of people are catching on to what Ryan Gregory and Alfredo have been up to over the years. And they were smart enough to figure out they weren't re-electable, and they got out of the races they were in, which was smart for them to do, save them some money and some time. And what I'm wondering, Alfredo, is when are you and Ryan gonna resign in disgrace and apologize to our community? You know, you don't even show any remorse that your friend, Ryan Klobus, is dead. You don't. You act like nothing's happened. And now you're talking about another, what, another pandemic? You can't wait to start, you know, talking about, you care about our kids all of a sudden or something? I don't get it. But you, you can't even look anybody in the eye. Look at you. Just, yeah, read your cellphone.
Please make your comments to the board.
Well, we need to think about, you know, what's gonna happen when they do resign in disgrace, or they're removed, or whatever's gonna happen, and how they're gonna be replaced, you know? Gotta call Gavin Newsom and let him call George Altamira to pick whoever he wants to replace. I get the system that's there, but that system isn't acceptable to me anymore. And, you know, until we start talking about what's going on, I mean, why don't you censor him? You know, there's things you can do, and nobody seems to want to hold him accountable. Everybody wants to just normalize what's going on here. And it's time that we get rid of him and Ryan. They need to resign. They need to get out of our community, go move to some other state or some country that doesn't have extradition laws or whatever it is. But, you know, coming in here and seeing him act like nothing's going on, acting like he's innocent, how many times do I have to ask about visiting Napa Valley? How many times am I gonna have to come here and ask you, what is the current salary? You know, the newspaper says TOT is down. Is anybody questioning Lindsey Gallagher's leadership on why heads in beds are down and her salary's up? No, nobody cares. Everybody's ignoring the facts, the truth, and what's really going on here. There's a lot more corruption in this county than just what Alfredo's been doing. The people need to look at visiting Napa Valley.
Thank you. Next comment?
Good morning, Board. I'm here representing approximately 1,200 county employees. My name is Melissa Lamatina, and I'm a Napa County employee. I'm a social worker for the In-Home Supportive Services Program, and like my other fellow county employees, we all fulfill a crucial role in the community. Despite the demanding nature of our work and the vital services we provide, many of us struggle to make ends meet due to inadequate wages and high housing costs. A wage increase is not only a matter of fairness, but also essential for retaining experience in dedicated professionals like me and other county employees. By offering competitive compensation, the county can attract and retain skilled workers that will ensure quality and continued care delivered. Moreover, a wage increase acknowledges the value of our work and demonstrates the community's appreciation for the tireless efforts in supporting the most vulnerable members of our community. It is a crucial investment in both the well-being of county employees and overall health in the community that we serve. I ask you all to take this upcoming contract serious and look through the lens of county employees. We choose our careers so that we can serve our community as compassionate advocates, connecting clients, excuse me, connecting clients with vital resources and advocating for their rights. Our presence fosters a sense of security and dignity for those we serve, strengthening community bonds and promoting inclusion. In essence, Napa County employees embody the compassionate heart of our community, enriching lives and promoting well-being through our invaluable contributions. It is unacceptable for those we serve to have to wait long periods to receive services due to county's inability to fill its many vacant positions, and also putting much stress on county employees having to take up the slack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, esteemed members of the board, community members. My name is Kevin Godwin. I am a union steward for our local. I am a licensed therapist in behavioral health. I have been working with Napa County since 2005. And there are three words that came to me this morning. Those three words are collaboration, commitment, and compassion. I think those are the significant qualities that drive most of my colleagues in the human service sector. And it's oftentimes one of the most difficult jobs to do, and we're counted on day in and day out to serve this community. And my hope is that we can urge each of you to vote in ways that are commensurate with keeping those three words in mind, commitment, collaboration, and compassion, as we do the work that helps to weave back together fragmented parts of our community. And we just, you know, implore that you guys strongly consider the hard work that we're doing. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Godwin. Is there any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Patrick Mulcahy. I've been a Napa County employee since 2005, lived in the county my entire life. You know, when we were here two years ago, we were telling you about the vacancy crisis that we're experiencing. It's only gotten worse since then. We're up to 16% vacancy rate last year. We're going in the wrong direction. You guys need to make a change. You need to do it now. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment in the room? And I know our phones are off, so thank you very much. We are going to move on to Board of Supervisors' reports and announcements. Do I have anything from my colleagues? Okay, looks like, yes, I knew you'd have something. I was waiting. Okay, Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you. I had a couple of things, but first, I wanted to take the opportunity to ask a question of our CEO. We had an item on our consent calendar at the last meeting that we passed unanimously. We had received an email about it, but it got caught in our system. So I just wanted to ask the CEO if he could walk us through that situation and how it was addressed.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, Supervisor Cottrell, you're talking about the Water Audit comment. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity. I know that the Register had mentioned this in a recent article they wrote too, so I think that, you know, there may be some interest. On March 11th, late in the afternoon, this was the Monday before the, before last meeting, we received a public comment that came in from an email address called general@wateraudit.ca.org. And that was sent to multiple people at once, all five of your board members. There was a CC to Mr. Everling of the Register, and I believe it also was sent to our public email box. And as a courtesy to the Water Audit Group, Mr. McKinnon, and Mike Hackett, who was also in contact with us about it, I'm gonna read it. That email was quarantined for some reason. Our system caught it. Looking, we receive lots of emails from Water Audit. Sometimes they come from somebody's name @WaterAudit. This was general. We have received general email from Water Audit. In this particular case, it was quarantined because it was sent to multiple people. So as a courtesy, I want to read that public comment letter, and I will provide some other thoughts at the end. It says, "Good afternoon. This was regarding agenda item regarding your board's approval and authorization of an agreement with Tishna Pastrama, doing business's profile, business records management for the term March 12 through 2024 through June 30, 2027, with a maximum annual amount of $74,376 per fiscal year, with an automatic annual renewal and approval of a budget adjustment for $45,000 for record storage and moving services." So the- So the comment letter that was quarantined that wasn't read is this. "Good afternoon. We apologize for the late comment, but this truly alarming proposed decision has just been brought to our attention. Given the recent interest by federal authorities in the manner in which the county stores and handles its records, this proposed course of action seems reckless to say the least. I will just comment that I have no knowledge that federal authorities are investigating or asking for information due to the manner in which we're storing records." The letter goes on, "First, the proposed states that it is necessary to secure off-site storage, but makes no effort to explain why county staff cannot administer that location. It is one thing to move records from one county location to another, but an entirely different thing to deliver them into third-party hands and control. We can find no indication of a request for proposals and no indication of the manner in which this proposal was negotiated. It smacks of a series of conversations between acquaintances in no way displaying the indices of proper government contracting. There is no staff report. Under these circumstances, it is wholly improper to transfer control and assign security for a media, for innumerable confidential, private and valuable records. Finally, let us consider to whom you are entrusting these critical documents. A sole proprietor who's only reported web presence is a car salesperson in Napa. They have no demonstrated capability for public record storage. Aside from a cookie cutter quote, end quote, website with a stock photo, there is nothing in the public record regarding a vendor with this name except a suspended entity of the same name. There is no physical address for the vendor, much less the proposed location to store the records. There is no assertion of security competency, much less rational standards of performance. There is no certification of the capacity of the vendor or inspection by any county staff or anyone else who shall carry the public responsibility for this decision. It is 4:45 PM and although much more can be written, this should be enough. Please, we implore you, do not take this step. At least, at, at the least, it will cause immediate loss of integrity in the public records concerned. The worst could be much worse. Please do not take the risk." So that's the letter. It's signed by William McKinnon of Water Audit. I did want to just, because of the letter, take the, and because of the article and because I've spent the last week and a half going back and forth with Mr. Hackett and Mr. McKinnon in full transparency, that when the email was received, we have a very complex AI system that, and we get attacked, attempted attacks all the time, as the public probably can imagine. And from time to time, we get emails put in our junk, right, our, our quarantine. This happened with this one email only, as far as we can tell. This is in one instance. The good news is because of Mr. Hackett inquiring, we caught it and we fixed it. And it's called whitelisting, which our IT staff did, and from now on, we'll be able to receive the general, general@wateraudit.ca.org, which I have over the last four days on numerous occasions. And I, I wanted to, to tell you that, that agenda item before your board, I'm advised that this county has been contemplating moving records since after the earthquake. Apparently, our warehouse during the earthquake was pretty thrashed. And there was a, a RFP process back in 2017. And the, it never, I never got off the ground, never got done. I'm not, I can't remember why. Maybe it had something to do with the pandemic. But anyway, fast forward to today, our staff went out, they solicited four bids from different companies. They selected one company and, and chose a company called Profile, who is a locally-owned, minority-owned, Napa business for the past 30 years. The why behind all of this is our leasing at the old site was expensive. We're paying 120 or so thousand dollars a year. We had problems with weather, wasn't weather tight. We had some, believe it or not, some water leaks. Earthquake and fire safety were issues there, and so we were looking to bolster that. And again, this was sort of been contemplated since 2017. So our staff chose, made the selection of Profile due to the reliability, security and safety, insurance, whether or not they were bonded, their track record with different clients, cost was an issue and proximity. We also have a local vendor preference in this county, which was applied. Profile, as I said, is a local, minority-owned and operated Napa document manage and storage company that has been doing business for 30 years, doing highly secure off-site document and record storage and secure document and record destruction. They store documents and records for hospitals, attorneys, banks, wineries, government and municipal agencies, doing this business across seven counties, including Napa. They do business in Sonoma, Contra Costa, Solano, Marin, San Francisco and Yolo. They have an extensive client list and because the owner was rightfully nervous about me publicly listing all of her clients, given that they both share the values of privacy and security, given the business that they're in, I'll just mention one of them. Profile has been storing records for the Superior Court for 24 years, both civil and criminal. It is, it's our ITS manager, I'm going to mention, they did tour the facility on numerous occasions. And during these tours, security measures were pointed out and demonstrated, fire suppression, earthquake measures were explained, it demonstrated. Profile met all the insurance requirements set forth in the county's PSA and it is a bonded records company and storage facility. So I say all of that, thank you for the opportunity to read the email and I hope that, hope that clears things up, puts some transparency on it that wasn't there at the last meeting because we missed the comment letter. And I hope Mr. Hackett and Mr. McKinnon are listening today and I hope that clears things up for them.
Yeah, thank you very much. And just to comment, Chair Gallagher and I toured that, the old facility last year as part of our orientation. And even then, it was clear that they were contemplating finding a better, more secure, less leaky place to move. So, but I appreciate you walking through the, how we responded to the missed email, understand why it was in place because we need to have this tighter security function, given the amount of attacks that our systems get and that there was extensive work done to cure. So thank you for that. I have two other quick things. One, I just wanted to read a statement and then give a quick update about the Fire Resources Fair. "I understand the value of free speech enshrined in our constitution and effectuated every day in elected officials, board meetings across the state and the country. From my personal perspective, when an individual chooses to launch personal attacks as part of their exercise of free speech, I understand we have to allow it, but I don't see that advances any substantive agenda." There. And then on to the Fire Resources Fair, I wanted to say that was a fabulous occasion out at the expo. And I wanted to say thank you to the grape growers, the vitners and FireWise. There were many families this year. And we heard from Dave Shu and Jason Downs, and it was a great event. So thanks to everyone and the community who came out.
Thank you. Supervisor Ramos?
Thank you. Just as a matter of updating where we're at for the regional housing bond measure, ABAG Executive Board received a workshop presentation on the bond measure on Thursday. And ABAG will be taking its action on April 19th in hopes of affirmatively placing what I hope to be a $20 billion housing bond measure on the November ballot. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, really quickly, I just wanted to announce that the Climate Action Committee met and agreed that we're going to be forwarding a reusable foodware ordinance, a model ordinance to the county and to all of the jurisdictions to, you know, review and potentially update or change and hopefully adopt. So we will be doing some outreach as the county into the unincorporated areas, doing some outreach and education, along with bringing the draft ordinance to the board in the next few months or so. So that is just a recent accomplishment that I wanted to note. And then to Supervisor Cutrell's point, I would like to speak with our CEO and, and our clerk about putting something on our agenda that reminds people who are making public comment that we would like to assure that people are being respectful and comments are free from personal attack. And I have seen a paragraph or two on other agendas of boards I'm on, so we can take a look at that and make sure that that is there. And oh, yes, Ms. Hoskins.
So on page one of our agenda, it's okay. Page one of our agenda, I'm going to recite the entire blurb, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of Napa County and its related districts and agencies. Public comment is focused, is, excuse me, limited to three minutes per speaker, subject to this discretion of the chair. Comments should be brief and focused and speakers should be respectful of one another who may have different opinions. The board is here to listen to everyone who wishes to address them, but everyone has the responsibility to act in a civil manner. Please remember this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on live television. The county will not tolerate profanity, hate speech, abusive language or threats. Also, while the public input is appreciated, the Brown Act prohibits the board from taking any action today on matters raised during public comment.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. As you can see, I probably, I'm not reading much of that part of the agenda lately, but I think that it would help. I, I will, as the chair, be reiterating that at the beginning of the meeting. And if anybody has any other ideas for improvement of that, please let us know. Okay.
Chair Gallagher, I clicked my light on.
Yes.
But just a quick update, you know, I did miss the last board meeting. We were up in Sacramento. Supervisor Ramos was part of MTCA Backledge visits. And I'll tell you, looking at the state budget, it does cause a lot of concern about what potential regional measures might be, but it does underscore the importance of the housing measure, the transportation potential regional measure in 2026. Because we are self-help, we do rely on local revenues, but being able to have success with regional measures is going to be very important because the state financial outlook doesn't look too promising. So again, I think whatever we can do to create more revenues for housing and transportation, I think really, is really important for us. On, on another topic, I do want to give a shout out to the fairgrounds. It's no secret that, you know, my kids play sport. This is not self-serving. It's for the kids in our community that have to play soccer and lacrosse, in my opinion, in fields that are subpar. And anytime those of us that are parents, when you travel and you see what other communities do, you always leave feeling a little grateful for what they have and a little jealous for what they have and we don't have. And working with the fairgrounds, they've been open to discussions around potentially creating sports fields there on a temporary use. And I think it's just an incredible collaborative, you know, out of the box thinking to create a solution for local families. So that's something that we've been working on the side. It looks promising. There's still some hurdles that we have to talk about. And there's always wonderful attorneys that raise some great questions around liability and risk, but these are eight-year-old kids or 10-year-old kids. So again, it's just trying to provide, you know, our kids, our families some opportunities. And whether it happens or not, I think the fairgrounds board just deserves a big shout out for being willing to have this conversation around creating more opportunities for local families.
Great, thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to item number 10. This is, these are administrative items for special districts. 10A, the Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Agency. We will receive a presentation on the Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Annual Report, Water Year 2023. Authorized staff to transmit it to Department of Water Resources and approve three work plans and a combined program overview document related to GSP implementation. And Ms. Jamison Crosby?
Good morning.
You can.
Thank you for pulling up the, yes, okay, thank you. So good morning, members of the board of the Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I'm Jamison Crosby. I'm the Natural Resources Conservation Manager and I'm very happy to be here this morning with Vicky Kratzinger-Greybert of Ludorf Scalmonini Consulting Engineers to present on several items that have been in development for some time. The first of those, next slide, please. It's just delayed, okay. So the first of those items I'd like to report on is the annual report for Water Year 2023, which was thankfully a more generous year than some of our previous years we've seen in a while. And the other is the delivery of three final work plans related to implementation of our groundwater sustainability plan. And in some ways, the work plans feel more significant to me even than the GSP itself because they're really where the rubber hits the road for implementation of those plans. So pardon the trite phrase, but it works. We submitted our GSP in January of 2022 and one year later, DWR approved it. And we sit here today about 14 months after that, presenting these three final work plans for your, hopefully for your approval. And they're important because they will serve as the roadmap for our actions for some years to come. Next slide. And before I go any further, I would really like to express my great gratitude for the public, for our partners and our stakeholders who have provided a huge number of really great comments, both by email and our 90-day public comment period and also at three workshops that we held. And I'd also like to express my gratitude for the incredible hard work of my staff, the technical advisory group and my technical team of LSCE, ERA Economics and Stillwater Sciences. It wasn't simply that they worked hard. We expect that. It was that they worked hard on so many things simultaneously. It constantly amazed me the number of things that they were juggling and doing well. So if you'll permit me, I would like to acknowledge a few of them by name. Apologies for the folks I won't be able to touch on. But from LSCE, we had Cab Esposito, Nick Waterson, Nick Newcomb, Charlie Jenkins and of course, Vicky Kratzinger. From ERA Economics, we had Duncan McEwen and Rochelle Young. From Stillwater Sciences, we were assisted by Christian Broderick and Esther Adelstein. And of course, my own staff, Brendan McGovern. So thank you all for sticking with us. Next slide. And before I hand it over, I just want to say a happy anniversary, SIGMA. SIGMA is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I don't know, what's the 10-year anniversary? I don't know. Maybe it's regulation. I don't know. We've been at it for 10 years now on this very important piece of legislation, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act that was signed by Governor Jerry Brown, a feature of which was the, the, I don't know that it was a mandate, but a, the idea that groundwater should be managed locally. And I personally think that we've demonstrated that as local government in Napa County, we are up to the task of managing our natural resources. And with that, I will turn it over to Vicky Kratzinger-Greybert.
Thank you, Jamison, and good morning, everyone. Next slide, please. So we have some technical slides, highlights of the annual report and the work plans. And starting off with precipitation, so this board knows that we've certainly been through weather whiplash, as the Director of Department of Water Resources likes to refer to it. You know, preceding very dry years, back to back, followed by our most recent Water Year 2023 from October 1, 2022 to September 30th, 2023. And we've seen hotter, drier conditions. They're becoming more prevalent. We've seen flashier runoff and more stream flow when we have atmospheric river events. And the thing that I'd like to point out in this slide is just the, this really serves as a barometer and the potential for natural recharge to occur in greater or lesser amounts depending upon the amount of precipitation that occurs and how it occurs. Next slide, please. So this slide is for groundwater hydrograph and time series of a well within the Napa Valley sub-basin. It basically shows over a decadal timeframe, many of the monitoring wells in the Napa Valley have been monitored for a long time. And you see, for the most part, historically, it's been stable groundwater level trends. And then we also see from these emphasized blue symbols on this plot, those are fall water level measurements. And in response to the drier years, we had groundwater. water level measurements, and in response to the drier years, we had groundwater level declines. And in response to the wetter Water Year 2023, even in the fall, we had a recovery and a replenishment of the system. So to emphasize here, the aquifer system is very responsive to these wetter and drier conditions. Next slide. We have a number of monitoring networks, nine monitoring networks to be exact, that were developed during the preparation of the groundwater sustainability plan, and this matrix is included in the annual report. We have a number of networks that are more traditional, groundwater level and quality and stream flow and quality. But with the groundwater sustainability plan, we added land subsidence, saltwater intrusion monitoring, and also interconnected surface water and groundwater, and related to that, groundwater-dependent ecosystem monitoring. I especially want to highlight the number of monitoring wells that were installed in 2023. This included 16 shallow monitoring wells at eight different locations, and these were near to the Napa mainstem and also tributaries, and for the purpose of continuing to improve the understanding of the interaction between surface water and groundwater conditions in the sub-basin. Also on this matrix, we've highlighted in kind of a peach color, those monitoring sites where we've increased the number of sites. So in addition to the newly installed monitoring wells, there's also been a recruitment of other wells for the different networks. Next slide, please. During the development of the groundwater sustainability plan, we developed the Napa Valley Integrated Hydrologic Model, and this covers not only the Napa Valley sub-basin but also the entirety of the Napa River watershed. And the emphasis for purposes of the annual report is on the yellow part of this image, which includes the Napa Valley sub-basin but also the Millikan-Sarco-Toluca area, which is largely outside of the sub-basin, and then also the Napa-Sinoma lowlands, which extends down to San Pablo Bay. For the annual report, we updated the climate and hydrology, and this was to bring forward the water budget components for Water Year 2023. Next slide, please. So some summary information, water use in Water Year 2023. As you can anticipate, we had a lower amount of total water use, it's 38,900 approximately compared to 2022, when we had about 40,000. We had groundwater pumping, all users, that was a lesser amount compared to 2022. There's also, we account for all the native vegetation and manage wetlands, groundwater use as well, and then there are other sources of water supply that are included in this total, including recycled water use and surface water supplies. Next slide. Groundwater pumping, this is a breakdown of how that pumping occurs. There's agriculture at 11,000-plus acre-feet in the year. This is about 74% of the total use. Municipal is the lowest water use at 2%. Self-supplied users, this is the second-highest use, so a lot of that use is primarily outdoor use. And then there's small public water systems. Altogether, in Water Year 2023, it was about 15,000 acre-feet, and that is comparable to the sustainable yield for the sub-basin. I also want to point out on this image, on this slide, the coloration, which shows the groundwater usage on average for one-mile-square sections. And these range from little to no water use in the greener squares to, mostly ranging from .1 to .5 acre-feet per acre, which is quite low use compared to other parts of California for crop water purposes. Next slide, please. We also track what goes on with the groundwater-dependent ecosystems. This is a very important part of the water budget, and these are shown in the image on the right, in the red and green corridors adjacent to the river system and tributaries. And the amount of use is about 4,600 acre-feet. Next slide. This is a busy slide, and various things to point out here, so I'll go through the information we're showing. Total groundwater use, we're showing over a 35-year period in the purple line horizontal across the image. We also showed total pumping, which is the red line horizontally. Since about 2014, we saw a bump up in response to the very dry year conditions in the drought 2021 to 2022. And then we're also showing in the blue bars, these are one-year changes in groundwater storage. And when those bars are below the zero line, that means we're taking groundwater out of storage to meet water needs. And when it's above the zero line, that means we're putting more water into storage. We have a surplus of water partly from that precipitation that I mentioned. There's also the green line that goes across this time period, and that's tracking the changes cumulatively. And this is important because the one-year, the one-year computation doesn't tell us about what's gone on in preceding years, like the very dry years in 2020 through 2022 drought conditions, when we had the greatest amount of groundwater taken out of storage in those back-to-back years, and that was unprecedented in this 35-year period. We also see the greatest cumulative amount of groundwater storage depletion about the end of that period. Fortunately, with the wet year that we had in 2023, we see a bump up of that cumulative change in storage to above the zero line. It's not as high as some of preceding wet years historically, so there's additional room that we expect to be replenished in the current water year, where we're again receiving more precipitation. And this is just a display of that increase in groundwater storage and plan view. We had an increase in the single year, Water Year 2023, of 21,600 acre-feet. And the coloration on this image shows the bluer coloration is where there is the greatest levels of increase occurring. Next slide, please. Next, we're going to turn to a few slides related to sustainability indicators and sustainable management criteria, the quantitative metrics that we track on an ongoing basis. So the sustainability indicators are shown here, there are six of them that we've spoken to before. These are all in the groundwater sustainability plan and defined. This is ongoing tracking to try and avoid significant and unreasonable conditions that may lead to undesirable results. And the one that's the most sensitive of these indicators in the Napa Valley sub-basin is the potential for depletion of surface water. Next slide. On groundwater levels, this is showing represented monitoring sites. These are sites to which the sustainable management criteria are attached. And in fall 2022, we described how there were 11 exceedances of minimum threshold. So that's the first thing that we're trying to avoid so that we're not tending towards undesirable results. Unfortunately, in Water Year 2023, with the abundance of precipitation, we only had one out of 23 wells that exceeded the minimum threshold. Now, this occurred in a location in what's known as the northeast Napa management area. This is an area that's atypical of the rest of the sub-basin in that it has a very shallow alluvial formation overlying more consolidated older formations. And this is important because these older formations have a lower permeability, and even though there may be more precipitation, it's a longer period of time for those formations to replenish and recover. The other thing that we're showing on this slide is for surface water. We had no wells that are served as represented monitoring sites that exceeded their minimum threshold, so that was a good thing. Next slide. Here, we're showing another sustainable indicator. This is about the reduction of groundwater storage. And in this case, the minimum threshold is related to the groundwater extraction pumping and whether or not exceeds the sustainable yield for the sub-basin. And as I mentioned earlier, in 2023, we had a groundwater pumping amount that about equals the sustainable yield within the noise of the sustainable yield estimate. So there's no minimum threshold exceedance here. The undesirable result, on the other hand, that's based on a definition that was in the groundwater sustainability plan approved by the Department of Water Resources. This is about a seven-year average, and whether or not that seven-year average exceeds the sustainable yield for the sub-basin. And as we look at what occurred over time, we have a seven-year average that is above that seven-year average. So it is an undesirable result according to this definition. The important point here is that this is a long-term condition that relates to the definition of sustainable yield. And this long-term condition seeks to have a move in the direction of groundwater conditions and groundwater pumping that overall, good years, more precipitation, and not-so-good years, lesser precipitation, that that average is about the sustainable yield. So this highlights the importance of other things that can be considered to take the opportunity to improve recharge and conditions within the sub-basin, and we'll talk about that in future slides. And next slide. So returning to the indicator, sustainable indicator on the depletion of interconnected surface water, these are interim thresholds set within the groundwater sustainability plan. The minimum threshold is a model computation based on a seasonal condition between June to October, and stream flow depletion volumes exceeding a depletion volume that occurred between 2005 and 2014 at two locations on the Napa River, Pope Street and Oak Knoll, that also have U.S. Geological Survey stations that can be compared to these model results. So this period, 2005 to 2014, is important because it precedes the implementation of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And then for an undesirable result in this case, it requires the occurrence of three consecutive minimum thresholds before tripping that undesirable result definition. Next slide. I'm going to go through this slide as kind of an explanation what we're talking about with respect to the computation of the depletion. So here, we're showing on this chart, two different colored orange and green bars. On the modeled conditions, the orange bars are showing the estimate of all of the pumping that's occurring within the sub-basin as a baseline, and this is for the Oak Knoll location. Adjacent to that, we have a tall green bar, and that green bar is when we're modeling a scenario that doesn't include either agricultural pumping, and it also doesn't include self-supplied user outdoor use pumping. And when we look at the difference between those two bars, that little bracket at the top where we have a note about the estimated depletion, that's the volume of depletion that we're interested in tracking during the June to October season. Next slide. This table summarizes the results for the preceding very dry years and also the Water Year 2023. We have the two stations noted for Oak Knoll and Pope Street, and at Oak Knoll in Water Year 2023, we did have a minimum threshold exceedance. At Napa River at Pope Street, we did not have a minimum threshold exceedance. And just to emphasize, these don't meet the definition of an undesirable result. This is a one-year condition that requires us to just pay attention to, and we're going to talk about that in the next slide. And then it also didn't meet the definition based on groundwater elevations, you know, for an undesirable result. Next slide. So why did the seasonal depletion of the Napa River exceed the minimum threshold in 2023? It was a wet winter, and we had recovery, we had higher stream flow throughout the summer. So why did this happen? So in this chart, we're showing a comparison between 2022 and 2023. 2023 is shown in the purple, and the dark purple is the simulated stream flow, where we're seeing stream flow at each of these months, June through October, during this critical period. We're also seeing in the light purple depletion that occurred during these critical months. But again, we had stream flow during all of those months. When we look at 2022, and we look for stream flow, there is none. We have a red bar that showed that during this critical period, June to October in 2022, it was dry. That's the red horizontal bar. Below the line, we have the shaded brown coloring, and this is the amount of depletion occurring in 2022. So one of the things that's very different is there's more water in the stream that can be available to be depleted, and it's also serving as recharge to the sub-basin. So there is also a lag effect from the 2020 to 2022 dry year drought impacts. We had some more replenishments still occurring, especially at the point in time in June. So what we don't expect is, because we've had so much recovery this year, is to see something similar for next year's, you know, Water Year 2024 conditions. Next slide. So in summary, about the sustainable management criteria and the sustainability indicators, in prior years, 2021 and 2022, we had several undesirable results brought on largely by the very dry conditions experienced over back-to-back years. And the Water Year 2023, as we just discussed a moment ago, we had the one undesirable result for the reduction in groundwater storage. And again, this mainly highlights the importance of trying to look ahead to what can be accomplished with natural recharge and natural infrastructure, with existing infrastructure and on working lands, and we're going to talk about that next. Next slide. So we're going to look at opportunities for recharge and building resiliency. Next slide. So this slide is showing two things primarily. We have the simulation of many water budget components with the model, and here we're looking at what amount is, what volume is deep percolating on an annual basis in order to replenish the groundwater system. That's a short bar compared to the tall blue bars, which are the amount of storm water runoff occurring annually. So we're highlighting here that in both drier and wetter years, there are opportunities to increase the amount of recharge that can occur in the basin. We have natural recharge, but we can also enhance that recharge in order to increase resiliency and mitigate drought effects. Next slide. So here we have recharge opportunities, and sometimes when we talk about recharge, it might connote just a designated site and a targeted approach to recharge. Here, we're going to kind of open up to other ideas. And through conversations with the grape growers and wine growers organizations and the Napa County Farm Bureau, and vineyard and winery operators and managers, we've talked about strategies, and this is on working lands with existing infrastructure, and looking at potentially equal or even greater opportunities for potential recharge from that additional stormwater runoff. So things to, you know, to utilize for getting water in the system, into the natural infrastructure, also the aquifer system, things like cover crops and building soil health and increasing infiltration, capturing tile drain water, pumping it back for storage and having in-lue use instead of groundwater early in the season, onsite storage of stormwater, and again, in-lue use, or other best management practices to increase conservation and recharge. So all of these things that could be scaled up across the sub-basin, you know, in accordance with growers', you know, operations and their site-specific interest, this could provide a large opportunity for some additional recharge. Next slide. So what would this do for us in adapting to climate change and building resiliency? Some things include improving groundwater discharge to the stream system. It could be maintaining and improving the flows in the system at the point in time of the critical period in June to October. It can include enhancing the soil moisture profile to allow for a delay in groundwater utilization during this critical season. And it can include adding surplus stormwater to buffer drought effects and also reduce drought effects on groundwater-dependent ecosystems. Next slide. So GSP implementation began January 2022, and a lot has been completed since that time, including two previous annual reports, and also the monitoring well installation, I mentioned, the 16 monitoring wells last year, and work plans, more than what are listed here, but the ones that we're going to focus on in the next slides are three that are in the agenda packet, and also combined program overview. There are a number of other things that are in progress and ongoing, especially stakeholder coordination and outreach. Next slide. So early implementation, these next slides are focused on the three work plans and the combined program overview. So the three work plans that have been under development for about two years, they included a lot of engagement with the technical advisory group and the stakeholder groups, industry representatives of various organizations in the Napa Valley sub-basin and outside of the sub-basin. With the public, there was a three-month period for With the public, there was a three-month period for review and comment on the draft work plans. The work plans were brought back to the technical advisory group on March 14th. Last questions, they were revised in accordance with the comments received, and those are their matrices that address the comments, and the tag recommended moving them forward to this board. So the Water Conservation Work Plan is essentially a resource. It's for stakeholders to learn about and consider and expand upon voluntary water conservation measures that are already underway. The Napa community does a marvelous job at conservation already, and there's some capacity to expand upon that. Groundwater Pumping Reduction Work Plan is more of a technical document, and it is about looking at what can be done to measure and achieve groundwater conservation above and beyond what's already occurring, and presents a suite of voluntary programs that can result in cost-effective sub-basin benefits. It also looks to whether or not voluntary actions can be achieved down the road. This would be after an implementation period of the various voluntary programs, and at that time, as necessary, mandatory measures could be implemented as needed. Another work plan is the Interconnected Surface Water and Groundwater-Independent Ecosystems Work Plan. This was recognized in the Groundwater Sustainability Plan as needed to address data gaps and particularly to advance the understanding of the relationship between interconnected surface water conditions and groundwater-dependent ecosystems. And it especially expands on the types of monitoring needed to characterize these conditions and groundwater-dependent ecosystems. Next slide. So this slide shows a number of these different kinds of monitoring, and this includes both existing ongoing monitoring, such as the shallow groundwater monitoring, surface water monitoring, fish monitoring, and remote sensing. And then it also expands the monitoring to include aquatic and terrestrial wildlife monitoring, and all of these things would plan to be implemented in the spring. Next slide. And one other document that's in the packet is a combined program overview. This is a high-level summary of both the Water Conservation and Groundwater Pumping Reduction Work Plans and key findings in those plans. This is posted on the county's website in English and Spanish and 10 pages long and is a good introduction to the work plans. Next slide. So in summary, we've experienced drought conditions and deluge conditions, the atmospheric rivers, a lot of variability, hotter, drier conditions. Those seem to be more prevalent, as I spoke about last year. We have an uncertain climate and extreme events occurring. The basin is very responsive to these events, both when they're drier and wetter conditions, and there's a need to, you know, look at other opportunities to try and buffer those effects. The community is very proactive about stewardship and conservation practices, and as I mentioned in discussions with all of the different sectors, you know, we see opportunities for expanding those measures voluntarily. Overall, conservation is being embraced as a Napa way of life, and we'd encourage, as GSP implementation continues, to think about four Rs: retain, replenish, resilience, reserve. So retaining water on the landscape, replenishing the groundwater system, building resilience to the hotter, drier temperatures, and creating reserves to address climate uncertainty. And I think with that, next slide, I'll turn it to Jamison. Thank you.
Yes, we'd like to turn it back to the board and their, for your potential action on approving the water year 2023 annual report and approving the three work plans presented to you this morning.
Great, thank you both so much. I'm just going to check ahead of time. If we, are we going to take one action? Do you think that would make sense, or are we going to divide it between approving the annual report and then approving the groundwater plans? I'm just, just one, okay. Just wanted to check. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'll bring it back to the board to see if you have any questions or clarifications that you need, and then we'll go to public comment, and then we will come back for comments and discussion. So Supervisor Pedrosa.
Thank you, Chair Gallagher. Vicky, always a great presentation. And I've always said, you know, I don't want a rosy picture, I want a factual picture, and you do a great job of just being factual. You know, a question I have, when you showed all the monitoring wells, is there any areas where you feel it's not adequate enough, where we could get more wells monitored to have a better complete set of data?
We're always looking for additional refinement of the existing network. There are some locations where we've, and even the Department of Water Resources has relied on existing water supply wells that may not have as meaningful information, you know, from those levels as other dedicated, you know, where the construction is more precise as to which part of the system we're trying to obtain information from.
So we do have areas.
Yes.
So I'd like us to be very specific, maybe not now, but you have a lot of industry partners here that have always been willing to be part of the solution. So I think we have to issue that challenge to the community of, if there's specific areas, how do we get more data? Because if we want facts and science, we need the inputs, and that's where I see well monitoring as part of it. So that's once I want us to be very specific and say that, whether it's a press release or some type of communication. So then the second part to that question is, what's the incentive? You know, Supervisor Cottrell and I were speaking to a group of vintners and growers, and a lot of them were saying, well, we want to be part of the solution, but sometimes the cost is an issue. So if I'm a grower and I want to volunteer, does it cost me anything? The answer should be no, but go ahead.
Volunteer to provide, to allow us to monitor your well, is that the type of volunteer?
Correct.
Yeah, there's no cost, and the benefit to them is that they get to data, regular data twice a year about where their groundwater levels are and their very precise location. And we do actually have a map showing, I mean, as Vicky said, we welcome data from any wells that anybody would care to volunteer, but we do have several areas identified as being a little more needing data. They're posted on our website, and we do have a description of it, but I can send that to the board after.
Yeah, and I would reach out specifically to the industry leaders and ask them the question of, how can you help us?
Yeah.
You know, beef up our data in that sense. So I want to be clear, if someone wants to be part of the monitoring group, who do they go to, and how do they do it?
Contact me, jamison.crosby@countyofnapta.org. I think it's pretty prominently featured on our groundwater website, all this information. But to build on your point about engaging the growers who are ready, willing, and able to help us, we have a, what we call a pilot sites program that we're kind of launching, where we are trying to enlist growers who, you know, maybe are at the tip of the spear in terms of their conservation practices to allow us to obtain whatever monitoring data basically that they're willing to share with us, whether that's pumping data, groundwater level data, information and data about the conservation practices they employ. So we've already made contacts with several, but we welcome any others to please reach out to me.
I appreciate that, Jamison. And then when you talk about the recharge, you know, to me, that's, that was a great, you know, slide. And to me, it's how do you incentivize those outcomes and how do you encourage participation? It's through incentives. And the fact is, I think Napa is very cutting-edge, and when I look at our growers, you know, they're using drones, they're using technology to be on the front end of efficiency. You know, they're being pushed in that direction, but a lot of them are doing it willingly. And I think we have to work with them and kind of issue challenges to the industry they're willing to step up, say, okay, how are you reducing water? And I'm hearing about these practices. Granted, it's the right thing to do, but they're also wanting to do it for the right reason. So I think we need to forge stronger partnerships with, you know, our industry groups and really learn from what they're doing. We have to make sure we're enforcing the rules and regulations, that's our job, but to me, sometimes there's a gap between what they do and what they know versus what we think we have. And I think closing that gap, working with them, I think is part of the solution here. So I want to challenge us all to do more, but really understand what people are doing on the ground already, because I think we'd be very surprised about some of the farming practices our industry leaders are doing that are already leaps and bounds ahead of what other folks are doing already. So thank you for your presentation.
Sure. Maybe to just note that there are a couple of workshops coming up that engage in that way. One is with the Grape Growers Organization, and Jamison is going to be presenting at that. And then there's also with the University of California Cooperative Extension on Recharge. And so we've been engaging with, one of the members of the technical advisory group is from the extension, but also her staff, and so conversations about recharge and providing information that can be, you know, moved out into the public.
And some of these workshops, are they bilingual?
I honestly don't know. I don't think so. Grape growers and no.
Okay. I would just encourage us where we can, I think, to try to have, you know, the integration of the community, I think, would be an important part, but appreciate all the efforts we're taking. I know it's a lot. When you thanked everyone, I think that was very appropriate, because there's been a lot of, a lot of cooks in the kitchen on this one, so thank you.
I would add just really quick that our work plans, the executive summaries of the work plans are translated into Spanish and posted on our website. The documents are voluminous, so it was really not possible to get the entire thing translated, but we did do the executive summaries.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to you both for the presentation and the slides. Every year, it starts to make more sense. And so I think, just one comment on actually the presentation, I think every year, we will need the background. So figuring out what is the best way to present that and then bring it back, you know, so we're looking at the same set of documents and points in the presentation, I think, would be helpful. I appreciate Supervisor Pedrosa's point about engagement, and I've been to several of the workshops, and Ms. Crosby, I know, I hear you say every time, anyone who wants to participate. So I know we're putting that message out there. I think maybe along with Supervisor Pedrosa, what you're saying is to work perhaps with the grape growers to develop what that program looks like, like, yes, it's voluntary, yes, it's free, here are the bells and whistles, you know, so that there's some sort of a little bit more tangible package that a grower or vineyard manager could understand, this is what I'm signing up for, this is what I'm not signing up for. So sometimes if we want to get information, we have to tell people how it will be used and how, what the pieces are that go along with that. And then, so those are a couple of comments. And then just a question about, because I think the agenda item is to, the staff will be submitting this to the state, the update, and then we're being asked to approve the three work plans. Once those are approved, it seems like we're learning a lot as we go here. Is it possible that those plans can get updated or modified after approval?
Yeah, not just possible, but count on it, yeah. And we'll be reporting out regularly.
Great. So if there's an update or a suggestion that can...
Yes.
Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much for the report, and I think I want to focus specifically on the undesirable results. First of all, the word undesirable, it's odd when you read, like, it's not a concern, but yet the word is being used as undesirable, and I'm trying to wrap my mind around that. So one of the things that we do is, when it comes to groundwater, we're always looking back, and there's not a forward. And so my question, and I'm specifically looking at, it's page ES6 and the, sorry, it's the table ES4 on the calculated changes in groundwater storage. And so my question is, we have the total acre feet of groundwater storage. I'd imagine somewhere lives the data of what the rainfall was corresponding to each of those years that resulted in that. And for us to be able to understand, where are our markers? Because looking forward, you know, this is, this is about management. You can't manage something backwards. You can only manage forward. And if you look at 2023, it looks great. We've got lots of groundwater replenishment, and that's wonderful. But by a certain time in the winter season, if we haven't hit a certain mark on rainfall levels, we're going to, we should know this. And so I'm wondering, how can we adjust these tables to incorporate what we know of ground, of rainfall levels, add in a column for, you know, the weird snowpack of 2023 that we had up in Angwin? But to understand so that we, we know when we are hitting a critical stage. Does that make sense? Are we able to do that so that we can look going forward on even, instead of an annualized basis, but to look at quarters? By, by February, we're going to know something, something's going to be either okay, maybe still undesirable, but not a concern, or we would know if the rainfalls haven't hit a certain historical level, we're going to enter a level of concern.
So many good questions there. The water budget components that are detailed for that entire 35-year period are in the annual report, and it includes the precipitation, it includes all the factors related to the groundwater storage, including the deep percolation amounts. So it is important to know in the current year what the preceding years translated to in terms of our groundwater levels, because like the back-to-back very dry years, that took a big hit on the amount of groundwater that came out of storage. And then we came into water year 2022, and that was normal, just below average, and, but that was a very different year, and that was a very concerning year because of how that precipitation occurred. It was very dry, almost little to no precipitation between January through May, and then we're into the season where we needed that groundwater. So in the groundwater sustainability plan, it looks to that winter period to see, you know, what can we project based on what we know about the conditions of our groundwater system now because of what we've already experienced, and what might we be able to, you know, predict, you know, from where we are today in this, you know, winter time, almost spring period? So that is part of the adaptive management process, but with the climate uncertainty, there are those things that I tried to highlight in order to buffer some of that uncertainty. The more that we can try to increase the amount of recharge that is occurring when we get that precipitation, the more that we can do to buffer those drought effects and climate uncertain conditions.
So that's incredibly helpful. So when we look at these, the categories that you have of very wet, a wet, a dry, where, how do we take it one step further in understanding, you know, as you said, 2022, wet and weird? So how do we, how do we get to the point where we are really pinpointing that data to forecast forward so that, you know, I look at this and I'm correlating it to how we look at budgets for dollars at the county. We have budgets for water, and that's what we need to be looking at. And, and none of this is saying, hey, 2024, here's where you're, you're headed beyond into 2025, and, and being able to close in the window of, of adaptation to lead to management, how do we continuously get to a closer viewpoint?
So one thing that we've tried to do, there is the annual report, but according to the GSP regulation, that focuses on the preceding water year. But now we're concerned about the current water year. So one of the things that's happened in the last two years is providing April, May kind of an update to both the technical advisory group, and I think this board has also received some of that information, based on the spring groundwater level measurements. We have a pretty good idea then, real-time observations, some of that monitoring is real-time, they're transducers taking continuous measurements, and that gives us a good idea of how the groundwater system's doing, what we've received in the way of rainfall to date, and then, you know, what kind of flexibility does that provide depending upon if conditions, you know, continue to be good, and there might be rains, you know, the way that we might expect them. Although, one thing I'm seeing in the science literature is average is basically a rare thing these days. So it's hard to say average about anything, it's better to prepare for the uncertainty. So it's hard to say average about anything. It's better to prepare for the uncertainty.
Thank you. And the last question, we have about six categories that are looking at undesirable results. And my question is, are these one for one? So, or is one undesirable worse than another undesirable? And do we need to be looking at, is there like a combination chart where we say, okay, maybe a level of concern or of high concern for the combination of undesirable results?
They each have their own specificity and, you know, related to beneficial users. And so they're all important. But the interconnected surface water requires such a full basin in order to keep that connectivity between surface water and groundwater that that basically, you know, will translate well if that's in good condition. Most other things are in pretty good condition. There could be some local effects that call attention to, say, groundwater quality degradation for unknown reasons, but there might be something locally going on that calls attention to why that might need, you know, a closer look. In Napa County, in Napa Valley sub-basin, there is such a large amount of precipitation that generally occurs that things like salinity and nitrate, those are really non-issues in the sub-basin. There may be things from, you know, local regulated facility kinds of land use that call attention to a very localized area.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay. I would say I have plenty of questions, but I think a lot of them will be brought up by public comments. So it'd be great to go ahead and open public comment. I do want to ask the board if you need a comfort break. Okay. All right. Well, we are going to take a comfort break for 10 minutes, and then we will be right back. 10:48.
Or just having a group of soil practices so that everybody is kind of, I think it's like a decentralized approach, that is having kind of one engineering innovation or project to recharge waters.
How are you doing?
I'm doing okay. How about yourself? Oh, how was it?
It was beautiful up there.
How crowded was it?
Not that bad, actually.
No, that's good.
Because I think there was so much snow that people got a little...
I can't handle this. I'm hard to get up.
The Thursday, I think it was not... Hey, thanks for your letter.
It's helpful. It's helpful.
So there was an article in the LA Times about emergency roof visits where they're just going up because people are, they don't know what they don't know about, like, how fast they're going. They're stoned. They're drunk. They're like...
Intermittently, but yeah.
Wow, that's so cool. Happy you have good luck. It is magic. It's magic. Yeah, no, you're in the moment. If you're not, you're... Very. How you doing? Yeah, no, I probably, I was actually, no, 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 that's, no. Yeah, that's close but no. Well, let me, that's what I'm saying, that you have two rounds of rain. Yes, they are. Yes. Yeah, it's not all staying in the lake. They do have to keep the creek moving west. Yeah, well, the, you know, the settlement, the creek settlement has changed the dynamic of how it works. Oh, wow. Yes. And, you know, I'm glad that Mr. Elsop read the email about the storage issues. That was about as much vitriol as you could pack into a relatively small message. Right, exactly. It's kind of like, you know, remember in the early days of Saturday Night Live, there was the Redan, the Van and Dan. I often wonder, you know, if we're ever going to hear a Denver line, you really got something. I think the odds are small. Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Well, they'll have a chance. Well, the Redford Ranch appeal, they're just reading what they've decided. Yeah, well, it's not like there was a whole lot of... But the protest of the shelter... I want, you know, it's like, it's a crazy party, you know, whatever. Actually, you know, the Redford Ranch is not a water use warehouse. Water use is a trivial term of a will serve problem. So, I know, I mean, but they are now, they're land use wanted. Oh, yeah, no, the process thing, that's all. Yeah, yeah, yep. Yep. They might get hurt. I guess the big thing coming up for them is going to be the dump. You know, it's interesting, I'll send you this thing I learned about the Center for Biological Diversity getting into the settlement. Really big warehouse. Which is in Riverdale. Which is, that is the same. And it's, so, we got a lot of that, you know, given the project. They've said that it's...
No.
And she, she said it was great. Yeah, that's an interesting wielding of the sword at the Gordian knot. I'm not sure it's good. They did it. Yeah. We'll see how things go, you know. I'm sensitive to the idea that you don't want to...
Chair, we're going to go live now. All right, we are going to resume our meeting. And we are now to the public comment period for 10A. Does anyone have any public comments on this item?
Hi there. Molly Rand Williams with the Napa Valley Grape Growers. On behalf of 650 members, thank you for this opportunity to provide comments on the GSP work plans. NVG's mission is to cultivate viticultural excellence and environmental stewardship for the Napa Valley. And as an organization, we've participated in all community discussions related to the GSP, also providing annual, the county with annual data on viticultural trends related to water use and conservation. And we continue to support the measured rollout of this plan and encourage ample outreach as many in our community are still familiarizing with it. NVG's comment letter was submitted on the plans with the aim of clarifying various points to help refine and build confidence in the model in support of successful adoption as required by the state. And as a community, we should also aim to design a groundwater sustainability plan that works for Napa specifically, leveraging the strategies being employed by water users, including growers. And the good news is that our grower survey trends show clearly that we can achieve the desired overall 10% reduction proposed in the GSP through such voluntary measures. And so I want to highlight a few points from our letter. First, our latest survey of our members revealed that 89% of growers are interested in more education around water conservation. And as many have been actively implementing water mitigation strategies for many years, these practices include root stock selection, so management practices, canopy management, monitoring plant water status, and utilizing recycled and captured water to offset impacts on groundwater levels. 88% of growers responded that they already monitor applied water. This shows how proactive and invested growers are in water conservation. Meanwhile, the majority of the survey respondents also noted that costs and uncertainty of efficacy were among the greatest barriers for furthering conservation. So that's just to say that we encourage the county to work on developing specific incentive programs. Perhaps there could be incentives for people who want to volunteer that monitoring data. Part of the reason that we're talking about a measured rollout is we want to continue getting things moving. That's important. But we also want to continue to analyze certain assumptions in the model and ground-truth them. We need to continue to distinguish between input and extraction problems to manage groundwater resources, you know, and really understand, like, it's not entirely clear that in the model right now, whether or not, you know, tributary flow would change if we stopped pumping to, you know, speaking of these kind of climatic factors that we can't predict? Or that if we had always been at 15,000 acre feet all along, like, how would that have changed where we're at right now? So just continue to try to understand that as best as we can. I also wanted to highlight, you know, based on some of the responses we got to our letter, that what's technically not in the purview of the work plans is still of importance, I think, to this group, the GSA. Diminutes water users are not included in the work plans, although they represent a disproportionately high intensity use. And so we think it's in your purview and the county's purview to consider analyzing and monitoring this usage as it pertains to groundwater sustainability. There's also reference to a 0.3 acre feet per year criterion for the sub-basin. And this is an interim number that's found in the groundwater ordinance and water availability analysis, and, um. We just want to continue to provide better scientific grounding for that because it is referenced in here. And I think that's all I really have time for, but so thank you so much for this chance to provide comment, and, um. We're looking forward to finding the greatest opportunities for promoting a healthy aquifer. Thanks.
Thank you, Molly.
Good morning, Board. Pete Richman, local grower and president of the Napa Valley Grape Growers Association. It's always a challenge following Molly Williams because she's the most informed person in the room. Thank you, Molly. General comments from my perspective. One, thank you to everyone for putting the time and effort in on this. It's very important work for all of us. I would encourage both county staff and the board of supervisors, when we use the word monitor. Uh, it sounds a lot along the lines of, I'm here from the government and I want to help. Can we find some other way to incentivize growers to help with the process that doesn't sound so onerous? Um, and second, um, as we move forward in this, I hope that we can still. Have the objective of this is a voluntary program and give us incentives to move along that path, keeping it a voluntary program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. Next.
Good morning, Board. Thanks so much for, um, welcoming us and also for the wonderful and comprehensive report. My name is Caleb Mosley. I'm the executive director of the Napa Valley Grape Growers. And, uh, I'm more of a storyteller. I grew up on a 35-acre vineyard and winery in the Santa Cruz Mountains. We had one well that my family lived off of. We had no neighbors drawing from the aquifer. It was up in the mountains, different situation. But I remember growing up with, uh, the responsibility to have to go sound the well. Once a week or so to make sure that we were using our resource as, as well as we possibly could. We almost had like a, a GSP built into our family to take care of that precious resource. Um, so this whole process resonates with me. And it resonates in a way that I wish we could, um, instill upon every user in our community, and specifically, I'm talking to the, the more diminutous water users. In our county. They're part of our community. They're part of the aquifer. Part of the, the folks that are drawing from the aquifer. So I'll go back to the South Bay where I grew up. My dad farms, uh, he runs a small vineyard management company. They're like micro vineyards, about the size of this room. He has about 80 of them scattered around, um, from Gilroy all the way up to, um, let's see, Woodside or so. And I don't know if you recall, but a few years ago down in Santa Clara County, they had massive issues with their water supply. And they put huge fines on folks that went above a, uh, pre, predetermined, um, level of water use. It was actually such a big deal that the San Jose Mercury News published several articles highlighting those that used way more water than they were supposed to, and I'm talking to the tunes of tens of thousands of dollars in their water bills. So my dad had a few of these, these small micro vineyards on these folks' properties, and he'd get phone calls in like April, March, April, hey. I just got a bill for $10,000 for my property, my water use, because he's tapped into all the city water for these tiny vineyards. And, uh, they go, why are, why are you irrigating the vineyards so much? What's going on? You gotta turn the water off. Of course, those that know grape growing know that he wasn't even irrigating at that point in the year. It was the massive landscaping use and pools and things like that. They were really drawing a lot of the water from their needs, and the folks weren't even aware of it. So whether, whether or not they knew what they were doing, um, it's something that we all need to be aware of. We're all part of this, and there's a way that we can, um. Talk to folks about drought resilient landscaping plants. There's some really great architects, landscape architects here in the county that have done wonderful work. I worked for a couple of years at Quintessa Estate. Some of the landscaping there, which uses no water, supplemental water, um, it's just beautiful, so I hope that we can take that into account. I also want to second just briefly that grape growers and, and what we've done with the Napa Valley Grape Growers in terms of our educational efforts. Um, when we're replanting vineyards, when we have those opportunities, we're talking about 1103 Paulson rootstock, 140R rootstock. These all sound kind of foreign, but they're really great rootstocks that are super drought resilient. It's the way of the future. We've been talking about this for years and years and years within our organization and educating on it. So I just want you to know we're, we're ahead of it. We want to be there with you, and we're looking forward to supporting this need moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and nice to meet you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning. Thank you, Supervisors. I'm Suzanne Groth, Groth Vineyards and Winery, um, a member of Grape Growers and both a farmer and a winemaker. So, uh, I'm in Ann's district, so she was kind enough to share what I think she called the voluminous report. Uh, on GPS, and, and it is, so congratulations on all the hard work. I saw the timeline that you guys started this work in January of '22, and now here we are in March of '24. Wow, a lot of work. I scanned the pages. I didn't, I didn't dive into it like Molly did. I really depended on Molly to really kind of interpret a lot of it for me. And what I, I did glance at scared me because it was very, very directed at me. And what I didn't see, and I love that slide you include, about 74% of the use of our aquifer or our water use is agriculture, and let's face it, today. It wasn't in the seventies, but today that's mostly viticulture. Um, and there's about 17% of what you guys called the self-sustained ore, and I'm assuming that's homes. And gardens and olive trees, et cetera. So I would love to see the number on where we were in, say, you know, 1977. And as really agriculture kind of took off and grew in our county. And, um, how many homes have been built? I don't know that number. I would love to dive into that. That is that diminutous, what, uh, they describe as the diminutous user. I call it the big house user. Because although my family only arrived in 1980, what the, the incredible growth that I've noticed, of course, is all the people who want to have, um, big houses here. And it's not their second home. It's probably their fifth home. Let's, let's just say it out loud. But, you know, big houses, the, the vineyard that I farm in the Oak Knoll District is a 44-acre vineyard. No vineyard's been added. It has been replanted, certainly no added vineyard since we've been farming there since 1980. But there have been multiple, multiple mansions built around me, and, um, yeah, they, they've got some big gardens. So I'd love to see some investigation on, um, the diminutous user and how they can use less water, how they can come to you for a permit. And if they don't present with a, um, you know, agricultural plan, or rather, a plan of landscaping that's basically, you know, not using water or drought resistant, then we probably shouldn't approve it, but anyway. So, thank you so much for listening, and I appreciate all the hard work on all this. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Michelle Benvenuto, Wine Growers of Napa County. So Wine Growers appreciates the hard work of Napa County staff, and Vicki, I've been learning from you since the Grac days, so thank you. As documented, Napa County sub-basin is highly responsive. And while we are encouraged by Napa's last two wet winters, we also appreciate the ongoing sustainability efforts. The implementation of the work plans and agree that water conservation is a way of life. Napa County's grape growers and winemakers have a longstanding tradition of leading the charge in sustainability. Including water-saving measures that can save groundwater pumping or can reduce groundwater pumping. And we appreciate the inclusion of voluntary measures in both the water conservation plan as well as the groundwater pumping reduction plan. Unfortunately, we see a critical oversight, and that's that there's no mechanism or provision in the plans to acknowledge the efforts of those who implement voluntary measures. This omission raises significant concerns because in the event mandatory measures are triggered, early adopters would be at a disadvantage. Without recognition, those who proactively implement voluntary measures would unfairly be burdened under the mandatory measures. Negating the impact of their voluntary initiatives. While some may argue that the incentive to save water should be sufficient motivation for voluntary measures. It's relevant to recognize that this incentive already exists. Therefore, we propose incorporating mechanisms in the work plans to formally, formally acknowledge and reward those who lead the charge in water conservation. This would not only promote fairness, but also stimulate broader participation and voluntary measures, furthering our collective commitment to sustainability. Additionally, we agree with the comments, um, from the various grape growers who spoke today, and appreciate your guys' efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Kinyetny with the Napa Valley Grape Growers. A question came up about bilingual workshops on water use and conservation. So I wanted to let you know and our community know that the Napa Valley Grape Growers Partner Organization, the Napa Valley Farm Worker Foundation, has an upcoming workshop on April 3rd on irrigation design. Which is free for Napa County farm workers. They also do an annual, or multiple annual workshops on various water conservation techniques, and has partnered with the Napa RCD on these before as well. Thanks for the chance to share.
Great. Thank you so much for the information. Any other public comment?
Good morning. David Graves, um, repeat offender, um, on water issues. Two comments. The importance of the technical advice that you receive has now expanded, or, sorry, the, the areas in which you probably. May need technical advice has expanded with the, um, additional work plans. The, um, you have a biological component that has not been, it's not represented on the tag now. You have, uh, I believe. Remote sensing, um, will be an important part of, of making the, uh, limits understand, understood and measured. You also potentially have a, an issue with kind of behavioral economics about how to get the, uh, many of these voluntary measures, um, put into place. So that, the area of technical expertise is important. Second issue is. Somewhat buried in the, um, ISW GDE work plan, for those of you who like abbreviations. There's, um, a very important sleeper called SEF. SEF is the California Environmental Flows Framework. It's not at all obvious statewide how SEF standards will work in with, uh, um, groundwater plans. And so I, I think it's, uh, incumbent on everybody to bring that, uh, forward so that we understand better how environmental flows. Will impact our measurements of the suitability of groundwater pumping. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment? Okay, great. I'm gonna bring it back to the board for discussion and comments. Supervisor Petrosa.
Thank you, Chair, and I'll be supportive of the actions, you know, just reacting to public comment. You know, I appreciate everyone coming up and kind of storytelling. I think that's critical. But I think the fact is, we have to acknowledge that, you know, we're in California. And there are some undesirable conditions happening throughout the state of California where sometimes it's not the board of supervisors that takes action, it's the state that takes action. And it puts your local supervisors in a tough spot where we're reacting to things that are happening to us. I think the opportunity here is to accept the challenge, do more storytelling, talk about what you're doing so we know. What is happening that allows us to go to Sacramento and talk about what's happening. But the fact is, I don't think we're gonna live in an environment where you're gonna see less regulation. It's a question of can you help us craft the regulation in a way, I think my three minutes are up now. But craft it in a way that is localized to the conditions we're seeing here. I think that's the challenge. And if you think that you're not gonna see more water regulation, I, I just don't see that being realistic in California right now with the conditions we're in, so. Be part of it, accept the moment, and help us craft the right type of regulation mix. That's responsive to what you're doing and the practices that you will have, because, you know, what you are saying, you know, Caleb, you mentioned it, there's a lot of that happening. It's just, it's being told to us after the fact. I think here is, you gotta get ahead of it. You're already doing a lot to completely understand that, but the fact is, you have to do more. And that's just part of the moment we're in, so, again, not that I want to be challenging, but I do think, I'm challenging you all because you're doing a lot. You just gotta help us be part of it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, and, uh, I appreciate all the comments we got today. I think those are, are helpful. I wanted to just begin my comments, um, with a perspective from Kings County, getting to know other rural supervisors. Um, in Kings County, they have five GSAs, and they're having a heck of a time getting agreement within the GSA and across. And they're facing following of major acreage of their farmland, and also the state is threatening to come in and take over control. So this is challenging for us, and we have a lot of things going for us, and frankly, a better situation, so. Um, I think it's always worth reminding ourselves that local control is so important, so I appreciate everyone participating in, in this process. Uh, and then I just wanted to give staff some, um, feedback based on what we just heard. I think this idea of, um, expanding the tent to. Be aware of the impact of, uh, diminutous users, I think would be really helpful. It's, I think it's really important that everyone in the community feels. An obligation to conserve how we do that with a separate plan within, without. I leave that to you to give us direction on. Um, and then Ms. Benvenuto's point about if we have early adopters who've taken conservation measures, how we help them. Identify what those are and communicate those to us so that we don't, we don't miss that opportunity, um, to, to acknowledge them and. And also let them be front runners for other folks who are, um, improving too, so. Like Supervisor Petrosa, I'm supportive of the, um, action on the table, so I'm happy to support, to make that motion.
Supervisor Ramos?
I have nothing to add. I'll go ahead in a second.
Okay, wow, we're moving fast. Okay, well, I'm gonna make some comments before we do, we vote. So, did want to, uh, comment on the issue around efficacy of the model. It's, and, um, Ms. Crosby, it's my understanding from sitting in workshops with you, et cetera, that the, the more data that we have, uh, the better the model gets, correct? So, um, as people come into, uh, doing more, uh, monitoring, Pete, I don't know what to call it, um, checking out how much water they use. And we are able to take that data and, um, feed that into the model, the model continues to improve and become more efficacious. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Okay, great, thank you. The other, um, thing that has come up in several public comments, um, in writing was the, um, .3 acre feet. And, um, it's my understanding that this is in the GSP. And from, um, what I've heard Vicki say many times, the GSP is the driving document, correct?
Correct. That number's not in the GSP.
The, the numbers underlying that number are in the GSP, which is, was approved by the GSA, i.e. the Board of Supervisors. Okay, um, all right, that is important for me to understand. I also, um, did want to say that I, um, completely agree with this, um, notion of, um, incentives. And also, um, what was mentioned around, um, early adopters and making sure that, um, obviously we're, we're fair in that way. Also, uh, very, very important that we look at landscaping. I think that we have, um, a lot that we can do, obviously, to help people with that, and, and I don't know. If that's always gonna be something that can be handled voluntarily, but really landscaping in the unincorporated areas, obviously, we're using just huge amounts of water that we. We don't have to be using. We can actually, um, make great strides there. Let me see, just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else. Also, um, your focus in the summary around catalyzing voluntary adoption. Just wanted to point out that, um. The certification programs, great idea, um, just making sure that obviously the standards, um, in those different certification, uh, programs will actually help us to meet the overall GSP goals. Benchmarking, I think that sounds like a great idea. Um, it's, it's shown to be effective, um, in other areas, so, um, doing benchmarking. Would, uh, potentially be very helpful. And then, again, the financial incentives. Cost share or rebate programs developed or expanded. Um, it did seem that you outlined pretty well, um, some different funds that could be available from, um, CDFA and other. Agencies and organizations where we can help people to match those financial incentives with the work that they, they want to do, so. That was great to point out. Okay.
And if I may, I can offer a couple of points about that. As far as, um, the, looking at landscaping and diminutism, diminutous users, that is actually one of the ideas that we have. That we'd like to pursue exploring is a cash-for-grass program. to pursue exploring is a cash-for-grass program in the unincorporated area. So I've actually spoken to the city of Napa about their program, and they've agreed to potentially let us hire their staff, if you will, kind of on us, to implement a program like that in the unincorporated county. So that's something we'll be working on in coming months.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we do have a motion by Supervisor Cottrell, and a second by Supervisor Ramos. So I'm going to go ahead and call for the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And then Chair, can I just ask if, so I think we heard a lot of different ideas, including developing a more robust incentive program. Is that something we can ask for an update on some period of months?
I would love to give you an update on that, maybe in the summer, maybe we can do it. We've already got a meeting scheduled, I believe it's for July 9th, to do, do our second joint meeting of the tag members and the GSA, so maybe that would be a good time to give an update.
Thank you. Okay, let me get my agenda here. That concludes item 10A. We will now move to item 11A. And that is consideration and adoption of a resolution of findings of fact and decision on appeal regarding an appeal filed by Water Audit California concerning the Napa County Planning Commission's decision on June 21, 2023, to approve the Rutherford Ranch Winery Youth Permit, Major Modification Number P1900126-Mod, and Youth Permit Exception to the Conservation Regulations P2300145, submitted by Marco B. and Theo Zeninovich, Roundhill Cellars, for an existing winery located at 1680 Silverado Trail South, St. Helena, California. Ms. Anderson?
Good morning, Chair. I'm here with Emily Hedge, and this is the final step in the Rutherford Ranch Appeal, adoption of the Resolution of Findings of Fact, confirming that the Board denied the appeal in its entirety and is approving the project and the mitigated negative declaration. The public hearing is closed, so comment is limited to whether or not the resolution accurately reflects the Board's intent. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on the resolution? Is that what I'm asking?
Correct.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. On the resolution itself, okay. Thank you. All right, we'll bring it to the board.
Motion to adopt the Resolution of Findings of Fact.
Okay, motion by Ramos, second by Petrosa. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry. Supervisor Cottrell.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I am supportive. I wanted to just understand from staff, I think, you know, the, one of the conditions is the cap on total water use, and then there's also a condition about a limited rate of flow. And it was pretty clear to me how the, the total cap is going to be monitored, but I wasn't sure about the rate of flow monitoring. Is that, and that's an important piece of kind of assuring the, so I don't know if that is something that will be reported to.
I believe there's equipment that goes on the well that monitors the flow as well, and that is part of the requirement for that condition.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, great. Thank you so much. All right. We will move to 11B, receive and accept a presentation of the annual report regarding the status of the Napa County General Plan and progress in its implementation as required by Government Code Section 65400. Mr. Hox? Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you very much. This item is an informational item. Section 65400 of the Government Code requires that planning agencies prepare an annual report regarding the status of their general plan and its implementation, and we provide copies of that report to their legislative body, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. HCD provides pre-filled out forms for this report, so that's why, for example, you, we provided to the Board of Supervisors a general plan report and then a housing element one that is separate here. I'll talk a little bit about the general plan and the housing element reports first. So those reports are going to find the 108 general plan implementation action items or programs that are actionable requirements under our general plan. And then with the housing element implementation table, you'll see the 51 action items, implementation items from that. The general plan report is a little updated from last year, both in format and with content in it. We have updated it to have the policies in this table above the actionable items, so you'll see that looks a little bit different than what we provided you in previous years. And then also, because the Board adopted a update to the safety element in the summer of 2023, the action items under the safety element section of this report are going to be updated, and they are the action items that, action items and related actions that were adopted with the 2023 update to the safety element. And that is also similar in terms of new content with the report you're going to see with the housing element that's in the packet. The Board in January, on January 24th, 2023, adopted an update to the Napa County Housing Element, and the action items that you'll see in that are updated action items from previous reports that reflect the action items and objectives that the Board adopted with that update to the housing element. As I mentioned, Government Code requires that we submit this to HCD and NOPR. HCD has a filled out form that also looks at how we are doing every year annually on our RENA progress. For the, 2023 started the first year of the six-cycle RENA allocation for the county of Napa. That goes from 2023 to 2031. And our assigned RENA of 106 housing units for this cycle includes 45 very low-income units, 16 low-income units, 14 moderate-income units, and 31 above moderate-income units. The reporting period for 2023 is a little bit interesting. HCD allows us to also include units from what they refer to as the projection period. This was June 30th through, of 2022 through January 30th of 2023. And there were 15 units in that period that the county issued building permits, dwelling units, that we issued building permits for. Two of those were very low-income units, two of them were low-income units, we had three moderate, and then eight above moderate. So you include that as well with the 38 building permits that we issued for dwelling units in 2023, spread out across the affordability categories. That was eight units of very low, at very low income, five units at low income, nine at moderate, and 16 at above moderate. And that kind of makes up our first annual progress report on our dwelling, on how we're doing on, on our RENA allocation. So total, that is, yeah, I'm sorry, 38 units spread out across both single-family detached, accessory dwelling units, and mobile manufactured homes. I want to point out with the accessory dwelling units in the 2023 housing element update that the Board adopted, staff, we were required to project how many accessory dwelling units would get developed in the county over that eight-year reporting period. Based upon previous building permits issued over 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, the average of that was about 12.25 ADUs per year, which comes out to 98 dwelling, 98 accessory dwelling units over the six-cycle that we projected to be built. Nice thing about 98 units, it's pretty close to 100, so when you see the number for every year, that's probably the percentage of accessory dwelling units that we have developed in that period. So the 21 accessory dwelling units we issued permits for in 2023 represents about 21% of the accessory dwelling units that we projected we would develop over the six-cycle planning period, which is really good. If we continue with that number, we'll blow past our original projections of how many accessory dwelling units we would develop. Accessory dwelling units make up a large percentage of our, you know, below, above moderate income categories. You know, in this, in this 2023 reporting period, we, the eight very low, the five low, and the nine moderate, all of those, all but three of those were from accessory dwelling units, then three of the moderate level income units were from mobile and manufactured home building permits that we issued. And that about does it. Just to mention, you know, there was a article in the NVR a couple weeks ago that the Napa Pipe Project is moving forward with development as part of the agreement that the county and the city of Napa went into for the Napa Pipe Project. We do assume that the 140 affordable units that we get to claim credit for on our APRs will probably get built out over the six-cycle planning period. And with that, I think that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Supervisor Cottrell?
Thank you. I know we're getting late in the meeting here. I am actually looking at the general plan implementation action items, and I think my comment probably also pertains to the list for that housing table, that we have certain things that are ongoing, certain things that are programmed, not yet programmed, and I'm wondering how we can track those better or have a better sense of where they might come in the pipeline. And so one suggestion I had is Steve Letterer has that great Rhodes Matrix, which lays out the five-year plan, and I'm wondering if there's a way we could adapt that, or at least use that, making sure that we assign some kind of timeframe to the items here so that we can say, oh, that's a, that's a next year, that's a two to four year, or that's a five-plus year. Because with all of these items, they're all important priorities, but without some ranking or calendaring, it's hard to know, and they can also sit there as to be programmed. So that's just a comment as I look through some of these.
If I could just comment on that, I'll take a look at that for sure. I can work with Director Bor-dona and talk to Director Letterer about what that looks like. We are, with our housing element team, you'll remember Supervisor Cottrell, that we came with revisions in December. We are, at the moment, working on getting a table, an action item matrix for those policy programs that we can filter by division that is responsible for that item, and then also, you know, in order of the time period that it's supposed to be completed, and then distribute that to those divisions and departments.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually had the same comment and question, that I, it was hard to tell, like, if something's ongoing, when does it, when's the anticipated date that it will be completed, or the in-progress, you know, in-progress over the next year, or four years, or, you know, that kind of thing. So I'm thinking you probably have that somewhere internally, where you may keep track of that, but that's not showing on this. So any way that you can give us additional information would be great. I was looking at action item, the land use 33.1, and it was talking about the, something we haven't talked about since Supervisor Cottrell and I have been here, is the residential building envelope ordinance, and that is, says that it's in process. Just kind of wondering where we are, if we're going to be moving that forward. I think it has a lot of relationship to what we were talking about earlier in terms of landscaping and looking at, you know, water usage by the de minimis users. And so this is something that I think we need to pursue. And if you have any comments, that's great. If not, that's, that's fine, too.
I just, I missed, can you give me the?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The action item again?
It is action item AG/LU 33.1.
Okay.
And let me just, I had a couple things marked that I wanted to. Also, we have in implementation policies, action item AG LU 107.1, undertake revisions to the zoning ordinance, simplifying and reorganizing to the extent feasible so that members of the public, applicants, planners, and decision-makers can more easily access information and understand code requirements. It was programmed for 2022, '23, so just, I think emphasizing that that is still, I think, very important per what we, what we receive, when we receive comments from, from the public, and for those who are, you know, seeking permits, et cetera. Also, under natural resources policies, action item CON, Natural Resources 1, amend the conservation regulations to offer incentives such as streamline review process for new vineyard development and other projects that incorporate environmentally sustainable practices that avoid or mitigate significant environmental impacts. I think that says not yet programmed, but I think, again, that is quite relevant to the discussion we were having earlier about groundwater and groundwater conservation. And I think that was, in the interest of time, all that I will, oh, one more. On Recreation Open Space Element, action item ROS 23, that is Support Sufficient and Stable Funding for the Napa County Regional Park and Open Space District. And, you know, in the notes, obviously, it talks about the different initiatives that we have put on the ballot but have failed. I still think this is a really important goal, and we should be talking about, you know, how we are going to look at this in the future. You know, we haven't had a lot of success here, but maybe there are new ways of discussing what we might be able to do to better support stable funding for our open space district.
Could you provide the number on that last one?
Yes, I'm sorry. ROS dash 2.3. And Supervisor Cottrell?
So I, I'll add a couple more to the list since we're going through them.
That's absolutely fine.
I had updates to AG LU 10.1 and 15.5.1. I think those were on the first page. Both of those, they either said, we haven't looked at this yet, or we're going to be programming it. And then in the circulation area, there was 6.1, oops, which was, which was something that was put on hold due to COVID, and so probably, you know, maybe we could get an update on that. And then 11.1, which talked about transit amenities and development projects, and there, that one I bring up because it says program to be evaluated with the climate action plan development and zoning ordinance update currently in progress. I just thought because we're getting closer with the Climate Action Plan, RFP, to just flag that one. And then the final one, update the county's parking requirement for all land uses with the idea that maybe we have over, our regulations are over-parking us, which is so important to minimize that footprint if we can. So that one is, was 14.1.
Okay, and I actually missed one that I wanted to just make a comment on, severe weather policies, SAF 9.1 and 9.2. When we're talking about OES, doing public outreach and campaigns, if we can assure that OES is partnering very closely with COAD, I think that there is just so much good work that's going on through the COAD in the community, and that we can probably meet a lot more of our goals if we are partnering really closely with our community organizations that are doing the work. Just wanted to make a comment because I didn't see that in the documentation. Okay, looks like we've had a discussion. Do we need to accept, do we need to take action to? to accept the?
I think we need to allow for public comments if there are any.
Yes, of course.
And then technically, you don't have to vote on the item. I think that's how we've previously done this item.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there any public comment on 11B? Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. And Director Bor-dona, did you want to?
I wanted to provide some clarification and also get some clarification. The residential development ordinance was mentioned, and I'm getting the sense that that's a desire on part of this board for something for us to continue on with. It was put on hold a year and a half ago under previous direction, but that's certainly something that we can start back up. So happy to do that. I'm going to be bringing a general plan update slash BDR, RFP update to the board soon, and at that time, maybe what I'll do is weave in to that, a lot of the items that were discussed today, as well as work with other department heads to see where they're at in the programming of those items, but also to make sure that where those things might fit and overall priority and receive direction on them, if it's something that's still important to the board.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we do not have any public hearings for special districts. We will move to 13A, which is a public hearing, ordinance to amend code section 2.100.235. This will be an intent to adopt an ordinance amending Title II, Article III, and amending language in Chapter II, Section 100.235 of the Napa County Code regarding giving the Director of Human Resources additional authority to grant paid leaves of absence. And Ms. Bruseno, thank you for joining us. Still morning.
There it goes. Okay. Good morning. I'm Christine Bruseno, Director of Human Resources, and this recommended ordinance change proposes to amend the language of Section 2100.235 of the county code. Current county code allows for a department head to approve up to two, I'm sorry, three days of administrative leave for myself and as the Director of HR with agreement with, of the CEO, to grant an additional 20 days of paid administrative leave for a total of 23 days. This ordinance proposes to increase the authority of the HR Director to approve up to 60 days, and with the agreement of the CEO, for an extension of an additional 30 days, for a total of 90 days of administrative leave. The draft ordinance is intended to ensure that when employees are involved in matters that require investigation or in situations where it is in the best interest of the county for their employee to be on paid administrative leave for a short period of time, and it ensures employees do not go on unpaid leave, which can cause a loss of benefits. It also allows time to ensure a fair and detailed process, and any longer extensions will continue to be brought to this board.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Supervisor Cottrell? I have your light. No? Okay.
Oh, sure.
Can you give us a sense of how often, I mean, how many employees do we have on this kind of leave at this moment?
At this moment, we have three.
Okay, and is that an average?
I would say, in my experience, it's been one to two on average. We had a high-profile incident recently, which did elevate it to three, but it is not very often. When we do go through investigations, we do have to provide longer extensions when some employees can go through an appeal process, and so rather than have to come more often, then this allows us to go through the full process.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments on item 13A? Okay, doesn't look like it. Bring it back to the board. We'll close the hearing. Discussion and a motion from anyone? All right, we have a motion of intent to adopt from Pedroza and second by Cottrell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to now go to, into our closed session, 14A. That is conference with labor negotiators, agency-designated representatives, Christine Bruseno, Director of Human Resources, Employee Organization SEIU Local 1021, and APE, unrepresented employees, nonclassified management, and confidential employees of the County of Napa. So we will be back for adjournment after our closed session. Thank you.
Charity Your Life.
Thank you. We are back from our closed session. Council Zel- Zelany, did I say your name right? Zelany, yes, sorry. I'm not used to seeing you over there, but thank you for being here. Do we have any reportable items from our closed session?
There's no reportable items.
All right, great. Thank you so much. That moves us to item number 15, which is the adjournment. We will adjourn to the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting on Tuesday, April 9, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.